All right, it's 5:30. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Let's see. Ms. Van Dyke, would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
...........................................................................
We're gonna have to get Alex a little flag sticker to put in the back there. Do we have anybody wishing to do tonight's invocation? Sure.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and all of our wonderful blessings. For we praise your name for our board and our leader, if they try to lead and guide our community and our staff members and our students, and we just ask that your hand be in all the decisions that are made. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Any requests for changes to the agenda? All right. Hearing none, do we have a motion to allow Ms. Powers to participate electronically? She is homesick. We have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, moved by Ms. Matheny, seconded by Mr. Gilry. If all in favor, raise your hand. All right. We'll move down to recognitions then. We've got the National FFA Convention. Is anybody here for that?
I think that's Ms. Steinman, and she is not here today.
Okay. We'll postpone that for next month. Then we've got the October Employee of the Month.
All right. Our October Employee of the Month is a veteran educator who is admired and respected by all members of the Craig County Public Schools family. This individual consistently exemplifies our core values of excellence, integrity, collaboration, and accountability in every aspect of their work. Their dedication, professionalism, and positive attitude leave a lasting impact on both students and their colleagues. As someone who is always willing to lend a hand, take initiative, and find solutions with a smile, this individual goes above and beyond to support our school community. Craig County Public Schools is proud to recognize Ms. Stacy Crowder as our October Employee of the Month. Her tireless efforts in the classroom, her support through the Booster Club concessions, and her unwavering commitment to our students does not go unnoticed. Ms. Crowder's contributions embody the very best of CCPS, and we are deeply grateful for her dedication in service. Congratulations and thank you for all that you do.
Woo-hoo!
You do have to come up here for a photo, though.
(laughing)
So that's only downsized, Ms. Crowder. You do have to come get a photo.
Is it downside the photo or just that she's gotta take it with you?
Probably with me.
(laughing)
Yeah, you gotta come all the way up here.
Break your jaw.
Is this the needlework thing?
No, no, sorry.
I'm gonna do that. I'm gonna do that. We're gonna smile.
So for those of us that are here for the first time, it's always a challenge trying to get the Employee of the Month here because we don't tell them why they are coming. So I'm interested, Mrs. Crowder. What was the... Did he let it slip?
He just said, "We gotta go."
Oh, he just said... Okay.
(laughing)
Well, we appreciate all you do, Mrs. Crowder. Thank you very much.
All right, we've got hearing of citizens and delegations. I believe we have some people wishing to address the board.
Yes, sir.
Who do we have first?
Ms. Rayland Stamper.
Hey, guys.
Hello.
My name is Rayland Stamper, and I'm here to advocate for Claire and myself regarding transportation to Governor's School. At the beginning of this year, Claire and I were asked to arrive at the school around 7:10 in order to get myself and Claire to Gov. School on time and also to get another student to Hope Tree. Due to the student's anxiety about getting to Hope Tree, it has manifested into a very tense car ride. Our Gov. School ride in the morning consists of the student urging our driver to hurry up, run stop signs, and exert dangerous behavior all throughout the morning, as well as showing other anxious behaviors while sitting in the car. Although our driver obviously doesn't listen to this, it still makes for an unnecessarily stressful ride. We are now expected to arrive at the school no later than 7 o'clock because of complaints from the student. Since the school does not make accommodations to pick up I nor Claire at our house like it does for the Hope Tree student, my day starts at 5:45 in the morning, and it also means that my mom and my 10-year-old sister have to wake up at that time also. It is difficult as it is to get adequate sleep whilst attending Gov. School and being a student athlete, but the added requirements from the student make it even harder. This problem could be easily solved as there's already a different driver transporting other students to Hope Tree. If you were required to ride in the correct transport, all of this could be solved, but instead you're affecting multiple people's lives and putting the wishes of one student who isn't even allowed on Craig County Public Schools to just get his wishes granted and do really whatever instead of letting two students who have always worked hard academically and follow all of your rules where asking for once not to be forgotten and to be given the same consideration you seem to give other students. Thank you.
Thank you. Have another one?
Ms. Claire Morris.
Hello. I'm Claire, and I'm also here to speak on the same issue as Rayland. I would like to, um, uh, keep going on the part... I'm sorry, I'm not great at public speaking. I would like to mention that we could get there... We could... Instead of being at the school at 7:00 a.m., we could be there at 7:20 and arrive perfectly on time. Instead, we are making these accommodations for a singular student, and to my knowledge, the student does have another way to get there. There's a driver who takes another Hope Tree kit, as far as my knowledge, and as Rayland said, it is a stressful ride there because while we are driving safely, he often urges our driver to go rather quickly and, like, will not quite go in front of cars but make turns quicker than she would prefer, and it's just a rather stressful car ride, and I do believe there's a better solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both for coming out. I think it's definitely something we can look into. Can't imagine that would be terribly difficult to get adjusted. Can't say for sure, but we'll definitely look into it for you guys. Thank you. Anybody else?
Oh, no, sir.
Thank you. Then we've got 5.1, the Superintendent's Report. Oh, yeah, anybody that doesn't want to stick around is more than welcome to leave. That's... Yeah.
We always like to give people that out. If you are... If you have other things to do, we completely understand before I... Before we move on to the kind of business aspect of things, but...
Thank you, guys, for coming out.
Thank you all.
Jerry, not you. Where are you going? (laughing)
So first, I just want to acknowledge and say thank you to our veterans. Mr. Marsden, veteran as well, so want to say special thanks to him on this Veterans' Day. We do have... McCleary is doing their Veterans' Lunch tomorrow. We've moved that until tomorrow because we were closed again today for weather. So just a couple little updates for the board. First and foremost, in the instruction category, we talked last month about the Virginia Cut Scores changes. There's still... So tomorrow, actually, and Thursday is when the Board of Education for Virginia meets to implement a timeline. My thought process and kind of the latest that I've heard, and this again is all subject to change, is there will be probably a four-year phase-in model that we talked about, and so hopefully we will know at the latest Thursday what that plan will be. Of course, once I, you know, find that out and find that information, we will communicate that with our teachers and with the board as well. Also, wanted to just briefly touch base that we are... We have still not received our accreditation and accountability ratings and scores from the Department of Education, and so it's pretty late for that to come out. We expect that. I've been told from multiple sources that it will be here before the holidays. One of the persons in the audience said, "Which holiday?" We did not get a very clear answer on that, so as soon as I get that information, I will, you know, share that as well through my calculations and sort of my... And again, I taught social studies, not a math person. We... I think we'll be okay in our accountability and accreditation, but don't want to say exactly what those numbers were just yet because they are, you know, still not official. Moving on to sort of human resources, just want to say congratulations to Mr. Gilry, Mr. Mathi... Mrs. Matheny, sorry, and Ms. Whitlock on their recent election or reelection to the board, and excited to work with you guys. Also, wanted to touch base or just brief the board that I am working with a former professor of mine at ODU and several other superintendents. We are trying to get a cohort of teacher leaders who are interested in obtaining their master's degree in educational leadership and sort of creating like our own principal pipelines within our small divisions. Us and several other divisions don't have anyone kind of in the wings waiting, and so we are trying to be proactive, and so still working on that, still meeting with some superintendents, trying to drum up some business with that, but just kind of wanted to mention that for you guys as well. I mentioned earlier in the year that Craig County Public Schools was selected randomly as a... For Special Education Review and Monitoring by the Department of Education. They were supposed to be here onsite for part of their onsite visit yesterday and today. We obviously were not able to host them due to weather. They are... Their next visit should be sometime in the spring. I don't have a hard date just yet, but they're gonna work to reschedule that. Speaking of being closed, we had a few days... October 30th, which was a Thursday, October 31st, and then Monday, November 2nd, we were closed. I think everyone in here knows why, but for anyone that's listening, we had a septic tank pump failure that required us to kind of replace the whole pump. It impacted primarily the middle school cafeteria and the main office and the high school. The bathrooms were unusable, and so just so everyone knows, we've taken our old pump and are having it rebuilt so that we have a spare, kind of a backup, in case something like this were to happen again. Also, yesterday and today, we were closed due to weather. I did want to just briefly mention that I sent out a communication yesterday afternoon to the community, and I'll publicly say it here again. The timing of yesterday's decisions were not great, and that falls on me, and so just want to be very clear and say that we will... That's never my goal to have a last-minute decision. We actually had some buses out on the road, and so kind of inconvenienced some of those folks, and so I do apologize for that and will certainly, you know, strive to make a quicker decision sooner. I did call all the bus drivers and just, you know, explain to them kind of the situation, and everybody was okay, but just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that. Onto our boiler system. The Board of Supervisors for Craig County is planning on voting for the financing piece of that at the December meeting. My contacts with Mr. Collins, County Administrator, that is kind of where we stand on that project. Once they approve that, hopefully, we'll be good to go and should be able to get rolling as soon as school is out in the spr... Or in the summer. I also wanted to briefly mention and just kind of get the board's thoughts. I know that in years past, December, that last day before Christmas or for the winter holiday has typically been changed to a early release day. I am in favor of that, but also wanted to give the board an opportunity to weigh in on that as well. We have missed a couple days, but that extra little bit is very nice and very beneficial. Our community would certainly appreciate that. Briefly, I will be along with several board members and Ms. Huffman, I think, and Ms. Belcher. We will be at the Virginia School Board Association Conference next week, and I think that's all that I have. Are there any questions that any of the board members have for me?
What's the actual date for that day in December?
For December ni... The early release?
Mm-hmm.
December 19th. It's a Friday, and I'm proposing that we get out at that 1:30 dismissal time.
I'll make a motion to do an early dismissal on December 19th.
I'll second.
All right. Ms. Belcher, will you poll the board?
Mr. Marsden?
Yes.
Ms. Matheny?
Yes.
Mr. Gilry?
Yes.
Ms. Powers?
Yes.
And Mr. Bellisaw?
Yes. All right. Any questions for Dr. Wheeler? Nothing? All right. Then we'll move on to the VSB A November 2025 updates. Those are some red line updates in there. If you haven't had a chance to look at them, there's not really anything substantive. It's all really just clarifying language. It was changed in there. Do we have a motion to approve for first reading?
I'd like to motion to approve the VSB A home instruction for the first reading.
I'll second.
All right, moved by Mr. Gilry, seconded by Ms. Matheny. Ms. Belcher?
Mr. Marsden?
Yes.
Ms. Matheny?
Yes.
Mr. Gilry?
Yes.
Ms. Powers?
Yes.
And Mr. Bellisaw?
Yes. All right, and then we've got 6.2, the dress code policy. I know, Darren, you had proposed this one, if I am not mistaken.
Yeah, that just clarifies the dress code policy and adds in... It adds in number seven, distracting or distracting accessories are prohibited. Names them out. Costume tails, animal tails, or similar attachments. Masks, costume style face coverings, or headgear that obscure the face. Items that create noise, drag on the floor, or produce unusual movement or visual effects. Exception, medical masks or face coverings worn for health-related purposes are permitted. It just... There was some question on the dress codes in the school.
Mm-hmm.
And I wanted to propose it to make it more straightforward and so there's no questions. So I'd like to make a motion that we went to the first reading and add, make it into policy.
Yeah, if we're gonna make it as a policy, which currently, I don't think we actually have a dress code actually in board policy. I think it's just in the handbook, if I remember right.
I second it.
Before you guys vote on it, and I apologize, I should have brought this up earlier. The only thing that I would, for the exception, is also put in there. I'm thinking for folks that have like a religious exemption. If we have a, you know, a student who is, you know, their faith requires them to wear a headscarf or a head covering, I think that that should... We should probably go ahead and put that in there. That way, we don't have to come back and kind of... If that does come up, we would have to come back and reevaluate it.
Yeah. Like to see an exception for school-sponsored stuff, too, like Spirit Week, or if we, you know, if the school wanted to do a Halloween event or something like that. Technically under that wouldn't be allowed, so maybe an exception for school-sponsored activities.
If I may... I just kind of figured that'd be considered under the administration of each school reserves the right to determine what constitutes appropriate dress. If they're having a spirit week coming, that's something that's...
That with that language, it's not judging based off of any particular event, though. You're just judging the dress itself, and so judging it one day differently than another without having something in policy is a little... I don't even know if that's a gray area. I would argue that's just not even allowed, so I think it probably needs an exception if we're gonna allow anything for...
Well, let's add an exception in there for the... For a school-sponsored event.
Yeah.
Right, I agree.
Okay. All right, so then moved by Mr. Gilry, seconded by Ms. Powers. Ms. Belcher?
Mr. Marsden?
Yes.
Ms. Matheny?
Yes.
Mr. Gilry?
Yes.
Ms. Powers?
Yes, ma'am.
And Mr. Bellisaw?
Yes. Again, that's for a first reading. That'll have to go up. All right, then we've got 7.1, the field trip policy. This is final reading. Did we receive any comments?
No.
All right. We did make the addition at the last meeting on the background checks for overnight trips. This'll replace policy IICA?
No, it...
Or just adds to it?
It's the regulation, yes.
Do we have a motion to approve IICA-r for final reading?
I'd like to motion to approve IICA-r.
I'll second.
All right, moved by Mr. Gilry, seconded by Mr. Marsden.
Mr. Marsden?
Yes.
Ms. Matheny?
Yes.
Mr. Gilry?
Yes.
Ms. Powers?
Yes, ma'am.
And Mr. Bellisaw?
Yes. All right, and then we've got the 7.2 attendance, or we'll just go with CCPS-9. How about that? Do we have a motion for the CCPS-9 policy regarding student emergency service volunteers?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the CCPS-9 attendance and extracurricular participation for student emergency service volunteers.
I'll second.
All right, moved by Mr. Marsden, seconded by Ms. Matheny.
Mr. Marsden?
Yes.
Ms. Matheny?
Yes.
Mr. Gilry?
Yes.
Ms. Powers?
Yes.
And Mr. Bellisaw?
Yes. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as a whole or pull anything off?
I'd like a motion to accept a consent agenda as a whole.
I'll second.
Moved by Ms. Powers, seconded by Ms. Matheny. Ms. Belcher?
Mr. Marsden?
Yes.
Ms. Matheny?
Yes.
Mr. Gilry?
Yes.
Ms. Powers?
Yes.
And Mr. Bellisaw?
Yes. And then we do, I believe, have a closed session tonight for personnel matters. Is that right?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to go into closed session for personnel matters?
I'd like to motion to go into closed session according to VA Code 2.2-3711.A. Motion will be made to go into closed session for the discussion of personnel matters.
Second.
All right, moved by Mr. Gilry, seconded by Ms. Powers. Ms. Belcher?
Mr. Marsden?
Yes.
Ms. Matheny?
Yes.
Mr. Gilry?
Yes.
Ms. Powers?
Yes.
And Mr. Bellisaw?
Yes. And if nobody objects, I'm gonna invite Ms. Whitlock back since she's been officially elected now.
To the Code of Virginia, Section 2B2, 3712, that to the best of each member's knowledge that, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from an open meeting requirements under this chapter, and, two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed session was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board.
I second.
All right. Moved by Mr. Marzen, seconded by Ms. Matheny. Ms. Felcher?
Ms. Marzen?
Yes.
Ms. Matheny?
Yes.
Ms. Gilroy?
Yes.
Ms. Patterson?
Yes.
And Ms. Felcher?
Yes.
All right. I can't get my agenda up, but I don't think there's anything else on there. We have no actions as a result of closed session, but I think, did you?
Yeah, I forgot to mention, I apologize in my report earlier, I would, in talking with some of the neighboring superintendents about the possibility of doing that rural, rural leadership cohort, some of them mentioned that they do tuition reimbursements, and have, have sort of, a sort of a policy that if funds are available, that they will help kind of offset some of that cost if it directly benefits the division. And so, some of that is comes, they explained that a lot of it comes through Title II funding, so it's not a direct, you know, it's not the locality that picks it up per se, it's just grant funding that comes in. So, with, if y'all are, I would like to, to kind of present a policy at the next meeting, or regulation, to kind of maybe touch base, or, you know, just kind of have a conversation about that. If we can, if we're asking our staff members to pick up an endorsement and take on that debt, if we could help offset some of that, when funds are available, obviously, I think that would be beneficial. Most superintendent said that if we pay for a class, you know, this semester, then they have to wait, they have to work with us for at least three years beyond when we've issued that repayment. They don't pay, I think it was mostly in the fifteen thousand to fifteen hundred dollar range, kind of in that area. So, just kind of wanted to mention that. I meant to mention that earlier, and, you know, would love, willing to answer any questions that y'all might have on that.
Is it something like what we're doing for that?
I teach.
I teach?
Yes, yes. So, this will be more of a, this will be more of a formalized, you know, just so that it's very consistent. And again, you know, we're not going to pay for somebody to go out and get their Juris Doctorate, become a lawyer, but if you wanted to, to add an endorsement that, that might, you know, benefit elementary school, and you need to go back and get some coursework and that, we would kind of help offset some of that if we had funds available to do it.
You know, we've got, I thought we had a tuition assistance, do, it's just not in policy, we just kind of always.
We have, we have a form that we fill out, so it's kind of the policy that we have.
Yeah.
It's all from that form.
Gotcha. But are you talking about paying for it upfront rather than a reimbursement?
No, either way, however we wanted to do it. But, you know, I just know that, that most of the divisions that I talk to, they actually, it's in their school board policy.
Actually in the policies, yeah.
Yeah. And so, and, and like, to me, that would, to me, that would, that would eliminate the, you know, well, they paid for two thousand dollars for this, and they only gave me fifty, you know, just make it more consistent if it was out there and, and, you know, in, in policy.
Yep, yep, I agree. Anybody have anything else? No, V S B A conference is next week, I think Heather might be the only, I had to, oh, is Walter going? Okay, good deal. So Heather and Walter are going? Good deal. I had to back out unfortunately, I gotta go out of town for work next week.
Cisco Systems.
Unfortunately, yeah, I'd be banging my head against the wall. I think that's it. Anybody have anything else? All right, hearing nothing, then we're adjourned.